Good evening in these extraordinary times. I'd like to welcome you to the October eighth meeting of zoning board of appeals. First up, we have an extension, appeal number two thousand nineteen zero one eight. Six oh nine North Hill Turnpike Riverhead, this appeal was granted as sought on June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen and corresponded dated October fifth. Monica Majewski, representative for the applicant, did request a one-year extension for appeal two thousand nineteen dash eighteen.
So move.
Second.
Aye.
We have Mr. Gagella, Mr. Gazello.
Gazillo, aye.
Thank you, Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the extension has been granted. Okay, hold over from the last meeting. Go ahead, Chris.
Appeal number twenty twenty zero three five Emmanuel Papadopoulos, four Nautical Drive, Riverhead, tax map number six hundred fourteen one twenty-three, RA forty zoning. Bavarian's is endo relief from chapter three oh one, section eleven, where proposed rear yard setback is twenty-six feet and minimum required is sixty feet. Where proposed side yard abutting street is twenty-one feet, minimum required is fifty feet. Where proposed side yard is twelve feet and minimum required is twenty-five feet. Where proposed combined side yard is thirty-three feet and minimum required is fifty-five feet. Where proposed front yard setback is twenty feet and minimum required is fifty feet. And where proposed impervious surface coverage is thirty-seven percent and maximum permitted is fifteen percent.
Have any of the neighbors spoken to one another? Hello.
Unmute.
Unmute. How about the next door neighbor? Who was not happy with this? Is she there?
Hi. Mary, I'm on, I'm on.
So am I, Emmanuel, I'm on.
Okay, let's hear from Mary then. Have you spoken to the next door neighbor?
I haven't heard from the neighbor behind me, no.
And she, is she there?
No.
I'm getting confused here.
I think Eric K. is the representative, Emmanuel is the applicant. And I believe Mary is one of the neighbors, I think she's the, um, the mother of Emmanuel.
Okay.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, let's hear from Emmanuel. You haven't spoken to the neigh- the neighbor of complaining last week?
No, I haven't heard from her, no sir.
All right, how about your mom, did she hear anything from her?
Uh, no objections from hers.
No, I'm good.
Well, we know that. Yes.
Oh, I think, I think he's asking if you've heard from the neighbor.
Oh, no, I have not, no.
Okay. And the neighbor isn't on, on board tonight?
I don't see her.
Okay. Anyone else, okay, does somebody else raising his hand, just unmute and let's... Go ahead. Unmute your phone, your... There you go.
Turn your volume up.
You're muted, turn, turn your...
Do you hear me now?
Yes, we can, just state your name and your address.
You hear me now, hello, my name is, uh, Bob Kelly, I live at, uh, one ninety-five Eightbells Road.
And we heard from you in the last meeting, correct?
Can you hear me? I, uh, I brought, uh, these folks to the, uh, to the west on the other side of Eightbells Road.
Right.
So I'm a neighbor. And they all, who also live across the street from, uh, the other neighbor that obviously has filed a complaint. So, uh, ju- just as long as, you know, if the house is being built within the, uh, parameters of the other homes that have been built in the na- in the area.
Maybe.
It's not the worst thing in the world. Um, I, I would be happy though Emmanuel and Mary would have reached out to her and tried to come with some sort of a, uh, some sort of a resolution where they would be able to, uh, proceed. As you know, Reeves Park's a tight-knit community, um, there's a lot, a lot of people there that are very close knit and we all seem to, uh, give and take back and forth. That house has been there as long as I've been here. So I, I know the home that they're dealing with, it's been vacant for well over thirty years, I guess.
So bottom line, you have no objection?
Excuse me?
Bottom line, you have no objection?
Well, I'd, I'd like to know what they're trying to build and, and I...
Didn't you get in touch with anybody since the last meeting?
No one, they haven't...
Did you come down here and get a, get a, get any of the paperwork from our clerk?
Have I?
What, didn't we ask you last time? If anybody had any questions, come down and get the, get paperwork? You could have seen...
So what I've done, so if I've looked at the, um, at the variances that they're looking to have, have done. And the thing that seems to be a little bit of in question is the, um, is it gonna be a separate garage or not? Is it gonna be attached?
It's attached.
It's attached, it's gonna be close to, close to what you guys are trying to, uh, have next door, like your folks' house?
Exact- exactly.
So again, the, so, so what my objection would be is that if you would have reached out to the neighbors behind you, you know, through all your eyes, if you had reached out to the neighbors behind you and tried to, uh, come up with a, a resolution, something where you guys could work together. Okay? Whether it's, whether it's putting up rebudding, whether it's putting up hedges, maybe not going back as far as necessary. Okay? Um, that, that's, that's the only objection that I have, that it's reach out to your, to your neighbors, okay? And I, I, as part of Sound Park Heights, which is Reeves Park, I'd welcome you guys into the neighborhood, I'd love to see you become part of Sound Park Heights and get involved, um. In that regard, I, I, I know that you're gonna build, and if something's gonna be built, then I welcome that, it's time to have something built there.
Appreciate it.
I'd just like to see you guys, again, it's, it's something where you have to have give and take with, with your neighbors, um, and they're your neighbors. They're definitely your neighbors, and they're not going anywhere, they're gonna be there for a long time.
Anyone else be hearing on this matter? Anyone else need to speak? Okay. That is the, uh...
That's the mother.
That's the mother.
She's the daughter.
Okay, who's got...
I got it.
Anybody have a, uh, any questions from the board?
No.
Okay.
I have a l- application. I moved at the appeal of Emmanuel Papadopoulos, four Nautical Drive, Riverhead, SCTM number six hundred dash fourteen dash one dash two three dash RA four zero zoning. Bavarian's is endo relief from chapter three zero one, section eleven. Where proposed rear yard setback is twenty-six feet and minimum required is sixty feet. Where proposed side yard, a budding street is twenty-one feet and minimum required is fifty feet. Where proposed side yard is twelve feet and minimum required is twenty-five. Where proposed combined side yard is thirty-three feet and minimum required is fifty-five. Where proposed front yard setback is twenty feet and minimum required is fifty feet. And where proposed impervious surface coverage is thirty-seven percent and maximum permitted is fifteen percent. Be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches and amendments thereto, if any, as filed by the building inspector.
Shall move.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The appeal has been granted. And good luck with the process. Paperwork should be ready for you in about two weeks. Thanks very much.
Okay, I guess we'll sign out now.
Next is appeal number twenty twenty zero three two Benedict LaRico, one sixty-four Oak Drive, fading hollow, tax map number six hundred thirty-eight three fourteen, RA forty zoning. Bavarian's is endo relief from chapter three oh one, section nine A one A, where accessory structure with attached deck located in front yard with eleven point nine foot front yard setback and accessory structures not permitted in front yard. Section A, nine A one B, where accessory desk, deck constructed north of detached garage setback is eight point three feet and minimum required is ten feet. And section two twenty-two E, where additions to shed increase gross floor area within a required rear yard abutting rear street line, representing an increase in the degree of nonconformity of a legally existing, nonconforming accessory building, which is not permitted.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Walter for the applicant, members of the board, can you hear me okay?
Can hear you.
Uh, thank you for this opportunity to, uh, present this application on behalf of Mr. LaRico, he is sitting in my office across the desk, I'm not quite sure, quiet at six feet yet, but the window is open. Uh, so this is an interesting application and the best that I can say is we come here with our hat in our hands. Unfortunately, uh, back in two thousand three, two thousand five, Mr. LaRico bought this property, uh, from a, a particular owner who had converted this tool shed to be an accessory cabin. Nobody advised him that this did not have a CO. So what he has been, were, trying to work with the town really since two thousand ten to try to figure out how to legalize this. So we've had several meetings with the, uh, town and the building department and actually one of the te- deputy town attorneys or ZBA attorneys. And I think what we've come up with is, uh, the application you have before you. So we have concurrent with this application, we have submitted an application for an accessory apartment. Mr. LaRico does live in this, um, converted shed, this is his primary residence. Uh, so what we're seeking to do is to see if you will allow us to use this, give us the relief for the setbacks, uh, for the building that has been already constructed and thus allowing us to go forward with the, um, accessory apartment review application, which if we are successful here, the accessory apartment review application, uh, should not be an issue, it meets all the requirements. Unfortunately, um, he did buy this property, I don't know if it makes a difference from Alora Courtney, and this Courtney was the one that got the original ZBA approvals, which you have before you for the shed, and then made several additions to the shed to turn it into, actually, if you look at it, it's quite charming and on the inside of it, it is a post and beam, uh, building, the main part of the building. Uh, I don't have more than, I, I don't have too much more to add to this, uh, at the moment, but I think that you folks probably have some questions.
Uh, Mr. Leroy?
I have some questions.
Why wouldn't Oak Drive be the, uh, front of the house? Why wouldn't Oak Drive be, would not be the front of this house, or the, this parcel?
Why wouldn't it be in front of the house?
Why wouldn't that be the front of the house? They're saying this is the, uh, this guy that's on...
This one-story dwelling is this, is this, the single-family residence.
Okay.
They built the shed in the back.
Okay.
And this was supposedly a one-story garage slash storage building. But then they put a deck on, so it's obvious that there's three residences on one parcel. So I don't know how that came about, um, but it's only allowed one single-family residence there. And can I ask you a question, Mr. Counselor? Is this property, is this property in contract for sale?
No, it is not, no it is not. And the garage, um, is not a, the garage is not a residence. The, uh, my client is willing to pull that deck out of the garage, the garage does have a bathroom, and my client is going to pull the bathroom out of the garage. So as a condition of the ZBA approval, we would remove the deck on the side of the garage and the bathroom that is in it.
So you're, you're saying that you'll, you want two legal structures with an accessory apartment being the one that's on Cedar Road? And then the one that's on, in the front there that has the two lights on the front? If I went inside that cottage, what's inside there now? A bathroom and that's it?
Inside the cottage on, that front's on Cedar?
Oak.
Oak, okay, so that's a garage and it's a, it is a finished garage, but it has, and it has a bathroom in it, and we will remove the bathroom. That's gonna ha- to happen, I've explained that to him as part of the health department approval.
So is everything inside that building, is it sheet rocked and insulated and heated?
Is it insulated? It's not heat...
No, it's, it's not.
I'm asking my client, no, it is not insulated, it's not heated, it is sheet rocked and it has a bathroom, which you, what he drank the water. And he drinks the water down in the wintertime.
And what was...
But that condition of this approval, Mr. LaRico understands that that bathroom will probably be removed.
What was the purpose of that structure anyway, to have a deck on it?
He's an artist and he used that as an artist's studio.
I see. So he's willing to give up drawing, artistry?
No, sir.
So...
No, I...
So we have three different, uh... Or I should say leaching pools, do we have any septic systems? Do we have...
So...
Go ahead.
So there's a, the main septic system with the house, there are leaching pools associated with the, what I'll call the garage studio, which will be abandoned, and then there's a leaching system that will have to be upgraded for the cottage. So we would go to...
Okay, so you're gonna apply to the Suffolk County Health Department?
That's correct, well, probably Robert Stromsky is architect, but yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm just wondering, um, how, how do the neighbors feel about this situation? Are there any neighbors that are on the phone or on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Um, okay, so I'd like to hear maybe from one of the neighbors and what they, they believe is going on here.
Okay. If the neighbor would kindly raise his right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Okay, your name and your address.
My name is Peter Tishner, I live at twenty-six Laurel Lane.
Laurel. And is that in, in, is that in, um, that subdivision?
Yes, it's, it's in Oak Hills, yes.
It's in Oak Hills, okay. And what, so what would you have to add to this, if anything?
Well, I have quite a little bit to add to it, to be honest with you. Um, this person who says that they live there right now, um, I don't know that I've ever seen this person ever. This cottage, since I have moved into my home, which I pay twelve thousand dollars a year in taxes for, has been rented out seasonally to someone who I don't believe is saying that they live there right now. That's first of all. Second of all, this cottage, if you will, could not be nearly up to code in any way, shape or form, from what I can tell. It is also not meeting any setbacks that are remotely close. It's across from my driveway and it's an echo box that I have to listen to when the neighbor decides they're gonna play their music. It can't be a setback off of what is considered a paper road because it's not on Cedar Road, it's on an easement. The only access to that shack is through an easement and their parking is on, as far as I can tell, the paper road.
Okay.
So we're talking about a neighborhood here where we can't even get our roads plowed or taken care of, first of all, but that's a separate issue. The access to this place is not even from Oak Drive and it's not from Cedar, it's on through an easement and there is not nearly enough setback there. So I'd be really interested to see what kind of plans they would attempt even put here. I don't know how Suffolk County Department of Health is going to pass any kind of septic system here because there's really no place to put one, as far as I can tell. And obviously, you know, I've let it go for a seasonal issue and I can let it go because I'm quiet here during the winter, but I've got, moved here three years ago and I've gotta listen to it for the summers and again, I've let it go. It's, it's not all year round and I know the renters could be worse. And there is my concern, this becomes a legal apartment, okay? It's, like, once again, it might be quaint and charming, but it is a little bit more than a shack. And my concern would be who is going to rent there in the future, ten feet across from my driveway? And so I think we have a few things to consider here with passing this as a legal apartment, where there's already an existing building on this road where there is no access to this, or legal access, as far as I can tell, or legal setbacks for this cottage that is very likely not up to code in any way, shape or form. That is not being, um, resided by this person who seemingly claims to be, because I've been here for, for years and I, I don't think I've ever met this person.
So if I...
So Peter, I'm sorry.
Chairman, I can have Mr. LaRico address some of those issues, uh, but let me, he is the tenant in the property, he, I mean, not the tenant, he's the owner, I, he has said he does not rent it. I will let him, you can swear him in a moment, I will flip the iPad over so he, you can swear him in and he will testify and ask, answer your questions. I have been in the apartment, um, I, I personally see no evidence of, other than Mr. LaRico living there, it does not look like a rental apartment. And Oak Hills, I wouldn't call them paper streets, they're private roadway owned by Oak Hills, um, so there is access in the back. In terms of the health department, uh, whatever the health department standards are, we are prepared, Mr. LaRico is prepared to meet the health department standards, he understands that, uh, if the septic system has to be relocated, if it has to be pumped up, built, whatever the situation is that the health department requires, he's going to have to do. And in terms of bringing the cottage up to code, uh, it, whatever has to be done to bring the cottage up to code, he is planning to do it. The, in, I think the only thing Mr. LaRico can add, that he does not rent it, he's faking his that, I will flip this over if you...
I've got a friend who's stayed there, but I don't...
So I'm gonna flip this over to him and, um, if you wanna swear him in and, uh, Mr. Chairman, ask him any questions, inquire, um, feel free.
Go ahead.
So...
Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Yes.
State your name and your address.
Uh, Benedict LaRico, one sixty-four Oak Drive, Calverton.
Okay, so your neighbor says, you rent that out during the summer, do you?
I've had a friend who has stayed there seasonally, uh, and I've stayed there also, so it's not a rental situation.
So who stays in the main house?
Uh, I've rented that.
You rented?
When you rent the main house, you stay in the small cottage.
Yes.
Now what do you do in the summer when you rent the small cottage out?
What do I do around?
In the summer when you rent the small cottage out?
I stay there too.
You what?
I don't, oh, Peter, I've never seen Peter, I park in the front, I've never seen him.
Excuse me?
And you know what?
Let's see you, you have, you have to come up...
You, 'cause you're lying.
What?
Stay right there, because otherwise we can't see you. So you're telling us, you're telling us during the summer, you did not rent that out to anyone else, you're staying there.
In the past, I have. I, I, like, we're talking ten years ago.
So last summer you didn't rent it out?
No.
So Mr. LaRico, how, how long have you lived there?
Well, I've had it since two thousand and three, I would say I've lived there for the past two to three years.
Okay, and prior to that, prior to that, you were renting out both structures?
I have rented out the house, yes.
Both structures?
Both structures.
You are after oath, you know that.
What?
You are after oath.
Hold on, hold on, we'll give you a chance, let him speak first.
Both, uh, ha- have... Have you rented out both structures when you weren't living there?
Uh, about ten years ago, yes, since then, no.
But you said you've been there for three years?
Yes.
So prior to that, were you renting the two structures?
Sorry?
Were you renting the two structures prior to three years ago?
Uh, there's been someone that stayed there and did services for me, like caring for the yard and things like that.
Okay, I gotta get one of those people. So when you bought the property in two thousand and three, did you finance that property or did you pay cash?
No, I financed it.
Okay, so you financed in two thousand and three and you're telling me that the mortgage company or the mortgage bank allowed you to purchase this not knowing there were no certificate of occupancies for the other two structures? They allowed that?
Yes, I, yes, I had a mortgage.
So did that come up in your title search when you did the finance in two thousand and three?
Not that I recall.
Okay, well, I would like your attorney to provide that with to us, I'd like to see the title search on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I bought, may I, may I say something else?
I don't...
I bought this with a friend at the time and she handled most of it, so I'm unaware of that.
Okay, so is your friend on the deed?
Is what?
He was, he was on the deed, he's not on the deed.
Both their names are on the deed, her name is no longer on the deed.
Okay.
Not, I, Mr. Barnes, I don't think I can provide a title search from two thousand and three, I did not represent that, Mr. LaRico, do you have the title search?
I, I have to look, I...
We'll do our best to look for it, but I don't think, and as far as banks, I can be, after doing this for more than twenty years, um, there are plenty, if not a majority of the banks, that COs are not really an issue for. That's the truth.
So if they did a survey inspection, they would go see that there's three structures on there that have living area and they wouldn't notice that, Sean?
But, uh, Le- Le- Mr. Barnes, I can tell you with absolute certainty that that is the truth, that the, um, banks are depending on the bank you use, these are not big issues for them, if, especially, um, well, I'll just leave it at that.
All right, let's hear it from the neighbor again. Is he still there?
He is.
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so I can tell you without a doubt, one hundred percent, that that man just lied under oath, because there is no way, shape or form that I've ever seen him living there. I see the same couple come here for the past three years, in the summer, and they're here all season long, and that's who's been renting it, so he is lying.
Which house, which structure, Peter?
The, the one that he claims is on Cedar, which is the, it is not. It is probably a hundred feet away from Cedar and it's, the only access again is a paper road. It's not just an Oak Hills paper road, this is an actual easement.
I, I understand that. Peter, have you witnessed anybody living in the house that's on Oak Drive?
Yes.
And who would you say lived in there?
Uh, not that gentleman.
So you, you've seen people there, but not him?
I, I, yes, I'm not familiar with, that familiar with him, to be honest with you, but I'm fairly certain it's not him.
So, so mostly you, you, you've observed what was on Cedar Road, but did you pay attention to what was going on on Oak Drive? Did you see people parked in the, where the garage area is with the deck on it? Do you think people were living in there also? Do you think they had three rentals going on at one time?
That I do not believe has been the case.
Okay, so you think the two structures at least have been rented out, but not necessarily owner occupied, is that correct?
Definitely not owner occupied and yes, at least, you know, the front on Oak Drive and here on the easement has been rented out.
Okay.
And it had not person living there for the past three years.
So, okay, so Mr.... Mr. LaRico, can you tell me when you bought the property, was that structure on Cedar Road, was it as it is right now and did you do any work to it?
Yes, it was the way it is right now, uh, I renovated it in terms of like a different floor and, uh, you know, things like that, um, made, uh, what else did I do? You know, different... You know, different bathroom.
So you did mostly internal work?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and, and you knew that when you were doing those things, um, you possibly could have used a building permit, but you didn't really want to do that, right?
Yeah, I, I didn't know that much about that.
Yeah, most people don't.
Yeah.
So, okay. So, okay, that's all I have to ask.
If, if we could clear this up in one respect, I mean, uh, I think I would recommend to my client, we could put a covenant on the property that it has to be, the cottage has to be owner occupied. I mean, that is a requirement of the accessory apartment, um, Article 1 under the accessory apartment code. But if, um, that would satisfy the ZBA as to whether it was owner occupied, we can covenant that the apartment, uh, is owner occupied.
I think we'd like to see whatever paperwork he can come up with.
Pardon me, sir?
We'd like to see whatever paperwork he can come up with.
In terms of the title search?
Absolutely.
All right, I mean, I, if he doesn't have the
It's hard for me, it's really hard for me to believe that he bought this property thinking that everything was legally there. Really hard.
Um, okay, I will see whether he has
If I can see the title report, that might change my mind. I, I don't know.
And also I have a problem with the neighbor not seeing him and seeing other people in the main house and in the cottage.
Well, the main house has always been rented, he said. I don't think he's ever lived
Again, so now he's got two rentals and he's not staying there.
No, I, he, what he is saying, what he has represented to me and what he said to the board is that for the past three years, this has been, this cottage is his, his seasonal cottage.
And then the next door neighbor has not seen him there. He's seen a couple there every summer.
So, is it primary residence? Is it his primary residence?
This is his primary residence, yes.
He lives there now full time?
He lives there now full time.
For the last three years?
For the last three years? He's shaking his head yes.
He does not.
I have not listened to his my address. I would say one year.
So he's been there one year maybe?
One?
Yeah. In terms of legally having it do my side.
Okay.
So i- if we were to check voting records and other residences, is there a possibility he has another residence anywhere else in the state or in the country?
Yeah, I haven't looked.
No, he does have another residence in Manhattan.
In the city, okay.
Yeah.
So he can have a residence in the city and then come out seasonally?
You absolutely can.
Okay. There's nothing wrong with that, but
No, that's what, that's what this is. That's what, that's why we've asked for a seasonal permit to do this. And, um, this is, he's not renting it. I mean, that's what he's telling me and in the past, I guess he has rented it because he's admitted that to you. Um, that comes as news to me, honestly.
Yeah, I know. So how about you try to provide us the title search?
I will ask him to look for his 2003 title search. If, uh, the board wants to hold this over, uh,
Well, we're definitely holding it on.
I will try to provide the 2003 title search for you.
Okay.
So when he bought it also, Sean, was there a survey done for him in 2003?
I, I, he's shaking his head yes. I will ask him, do you know, what attorney did you use? Uh, I'm, I, I will have him look for every document he has when he purchased the property.
Well, I would like to see the 2003 survey because I know the title company had to make him do that. He had, they had to.
I will ask him to look for every document he has when he purchased the property.
Good, thank you. Okay.
All right, we're going to adjourn this to the next meeting, but is there anyone else there that would like to speak on this matter? Just unmute. No one else, all right, let's have a, an adjournment to the next meeting. Who's got it?
Got a date.
Uh, yeah, that helps.
22nd, I would think.
So excuse me one second.
Yes, go ahead, Peter.
Regarding what this man just vouched for, that he has lived there, and I can attest to you that he does not and has not, because I've watched the tenants for the past entire summer who have lived there. And I can, I'm quite certain I can find other neighbors who could attest to that same thing, that he does not.
Are you talking about the front house or the back house?
I'm talking about the back house, which again is, doesn't even
Well, we're trying to establish if he's owner occupied on, on the property. See, the accessory, the accessory apartment law allows you to have an accessory apartment if you reside there, okay?
Which he does not.
Okay, that's fine. The question is, have you ever observed him not being in the front house? Or you're just, you're attesting to just the back house?
Well, I, I, I'm not paying attention to what my neighbors are doing out, up in the front house there, to be honest with you. I, they rent
Okay, Peter, so, so the, the idea is I have to find out or we need to find out. Has he been renting that, that front building out? Because if he has, he would be then not telling us the truth.
Yes, of course he's, he's, of course he's renting the front building out and he's been renting out the shack in the back. I've never seen this man before. I've never seen this man before and he's playing with it.
Jim.
All right.
I got an application with adjourners till 10:22.
Yes, hold on, so there's nobody else to be heard on this matter, none of the other neighbors? All right, uh, Peter, if you have anyone else to help support your claim? If anyone else from the neighborhood has anything to say, I would, I would suggest you have them ready for the 22nd.
I'm sorry, when is it going to be?
We, we're adjourning this to the 22nd of October.
Two weeks. 22nd, very good.
That'll give you enough time, Sean, to get that documents together to us, please?
Okay, thank, thank you. Now, I just, for correction, he has said that he rents that front house. He's always, that's always rented the front house.
Okay, well, if he's renting the front house and there's somebody else living in the back house, so it's not owner occupied.
Well, that's what the gentleman is saying. My client is saying something different and if we look at it prospectively in terms of the permit, this is going to be his primary residence. So, I mean, we're, that's, we will covenant that, but we'll get you the documentation and, uh, we can talk to you to the, uh, present whatever we have, uh, on the 22nd.
Okay.
So, Sean, if you file a covenant, tell me, who enforces the covenants?
You can, you can, well, it would be the town. We would have it in favor of the town that they could enforce the covenant. I mean, it's just
So if the town discovers that he's not living there, then they would forfeit his CO for the cottage?
Yeah, we can couch it and that's pretty, uh, tough terms, but if that's what the board is inclined to do, he can do that. But that, again, it would be, we put the covenant in favor of the town.
All right, we'll have discussions, I guess.
I don't know if that's tough terms, is it just, it's the law. He's supposed to live there. It's not tough terms.
I couldn't hear.
Peter, repeat, repeat what you said?
I, he, Mr. Walter suggests that that's tough terms, that this person's supposed to live there, but that is the law. It's not tough terms and the covenant should be removed if he's not living there.
Well, I was more curious to see how it would be enforced. Because once, if we grant this, who's gonna keep an eye on it? Is it code enforcement? Will they be filing their rental permit every other year? Will there be inspections? Will he be living there? How do we know it's gonna be owner occupied? Because your valid covenants have said that.
That's also my concern.
Well, if it says that and then he does live there, that's fine. But let's say he breaks that covenant, then, then the, the zoning board has the ability to have a resolution and, and nullify our variance, just so you know that.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's, and that's what we're suggesting. So the rental permit would cover, you would have your, five, or every two years, you'd have a rental inspection. You can't really do an inspection on a residence, but, um, in this situation, I think that it's, um, acceptable that the zoning board of appeals would put a covenant and if it was determined by code enforcement that he was not occupying this as his primary residence, that it would be revoked. And I would suggest the covenant would read that if he sold it and he's not selling it, it is not for sale. Right, Mr. LaRico? Not for sale. So any future owner would have to live in either the cottage or the main house, you know, depending on how we draft it with Ms. Thomas.
So is, is that his intent to take over the, the front house and then try to rent this out?
I think that's what it sounds like.
That's what I was expecting too. And to be honest with you, the structure itself, I, I would love to see a building inspector take a look at it because, you know, regardless of what's going on inside and how quaint it is, I don't believe there's nearly enough setbacks here to make it even close to legal. And obviously you're applying for a variance because of that, but, you know, obviously I have an issue with it.
Well, Peter, they made an application. Now, the building inspector, after the, if the variance is granted, would then come and look at the structure to make sure it conforms to the con- construction code. But part of our variance would be the setback from the street, which the structure was already given a setback variance. However, it was converted to a cottage, so I would think, um, it would be, the only right way to do it would be to grant the variance for the setback as well, if we were to do that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously a setback for a shed or a garage is a lot different than a, someone, a common's living.
That's correct.
And again, yeah, I mean, please, don't, do not forget the fact that, you know, it, it was referred to as, um, a shack that is on Cedar Road. Again, it is not. And it really should be noted that this, the only access to this property is through an easement on a paper street that there's no place to have any parking and that, that other than what's on the paper street. And again, I don't know how it could possibly pass the Suffolk County Board of Health, you know, as far as septic system. There's probably a 55 gallon drum in there right now, so.
Okay, so let me just address, the health department is not an issue that the ZBA has to deal with. Mr. LaRico says that the reason this gentleman doesn't see him is he parks on Oak Drive. As when I visited Mr. LaRico the first time, I parked on Oak Drive and I walked down to the front of the cottage. There would be absolutely no way for, um, this gentleman that's speaking to have known that I was there parking on Oak Drive, walking down past his garage, down his steps to his cottage. No way, you couldn't see him. That's where he parks. And when I was there, that's where he parked. He doesn't park on Cedar that I've ever seen. And I've, and I've been there half a dozen times already.
Okay, so then explain to me who the two cars are that are parking on Cedar. It's, and again, it's not Cedar, sir. It's not Cedar. It's a paper road off of Cedar, perpendicular to Cedar, okay? And there are two cars parked there and I see them every night when I walk my garbage out and it's funny because I don't see him.
All right. I, I'm not gonna respond back and forth like this, so we're
All right, enough for tonight.
Thank you.
Everybody has their homework to do. Let's have a reading.
Thank you, sir.
Don't get you adjourned until the 22nd, I believe.
22nd.
We got a second also.
I moved out the application for variances and relief from Chapter 301, Section 9A1A, where accessory structure detached deck located in the front yard at 11.9 feet, front yard and setback on accessory structures not permitted in the front yard, Section 9A1B, where accessory deck constructed north, detached garage setback is 8.3 feet and minimum required is 10 feet in Section 222B or EFA bigger part, where additions to shed increase gross floor area when a required rear yard, abutting a rear street line represent increase in the degree of nonconformity of illegally existing nonconforming accessory building was not permitted be adjourned till the next meeting, which is September, I'd say October 22nd.
So moved. Okay.
Mr. Gazilla?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
I vote aye. All right, let's move on with the next application.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Appeal number 2020039, Richard Hersfeld, 5 Bayside Avenue, South Jamesport, Tax Map Number 693114.1, RV40 zoning. For variances and a relief from Chapter 301, Section 15A1A, where accessory structure is in front yard, which is not permitted, and Section 222E, where proposed reconstruction increases gross floor area of accessory structure in front yard representing an increase in the degree of nonconformity of a preexisting nonconforming accessory structure, which is not permitted.
All right, Counselor, do you have the floor? You got unmute? Counselor, you have to un, you have to unmute.
Hello? Hello?
There we go.
No, that's not me.
Okay.
There you go. Hold on, let's hear, let's hear from Mr. Walter.
Uh, this is Sean Walter. I represent Richard and Melody Hersfeld in the reconstruction of a 18 by 21 square foot, uh, shed. This shed, I, if you look at the pictures that we submitted, this shed was originally constructed, uh, in the 40s as a horse barn. The shed was expanded at some time, we believe, in the 70s. Um, if you went out and looked at the shed or you looked at the pictures, you can see that the shed was, it's a clapboard siding and it's rather old construction. My client had, um, originally attempted to take the roof off, to redo the roof and found extensive damage. And, uh, the contractor, he authorized contractor to do more than he should have done, uh, without a building permit. We are looking to reconstruct the original shed as a shed. One of the underlying, uh, problems, uh, they did ask, back in 2010, they did get a, an updated letter of preexisting nonconforming use for the property, but I don't believe that this, this shed has been this size since the 70s. Nobody went out to the house when they did the letter of preexisting use. And when I first looked at it, I wasn't sure, but then I, when I went out to look at the house, uh, the letter of preexisting use calls the residence a single fam- single story residence. It's not a single story residence, it's a two story residence. So we're not quite sure when the shed was rebuilt, uh, or enlarged, but we're not looking to make it any bigger than it originally was. It's in conformance with the neighbor's, uh, garage shed, uh, just to the left of it. If I'm looking at the backyard or at this from the road. Um, and we have letters of support from three of the neighbors and the shed will have nothing but electric. It's not gonna be used for any kind of habitable space.
Uh, Sean, is there any bathrooms in either one of the buildings that are on Bayside Avenue? Are there restrooms?
I don't believe so, but Mr. Hersfeld is on the, uh, from Florida. He is on Zoom, so we could ask him that question. And there he is.
All right, if you kindly raise your right hand, if you say this, swear to tell the truth, don't think of the truth, selfie God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Richard Hersfeld, uh, 11415 Northwest 49 Drive, Coral Springs, Florida, 33076.
Okay. What do you got?
So do you have any, uh, any kind of bathroom facilities in the two buildings that are on Bayside Avenue?
None.
Nothing, so, so you, you intend to use the two story garage for your vehicles, obviously?
Yes.
And the other storage shed would be used for?
It'd be used for storage, which has been used all the years.
Okay.
And, um,
And, and the one story bath house, if they call it a bath house, I would assume that's preexisting?
Yeah, yeah, that's been there.
Forever. And so that's for guests, if you have a guest, people that come?
Yeah, but most of the time, uh, you see, it's our summer house.
Okay.
It's usually family. We have family from California.
No problem.
From Florida and stuff and, uh, that's when that's used. Other than that, it's used by us.
Okay. And none of the neighbors object? Do we have any neighbors online? Counselor?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. There are three, uh, we submitted three letters of support, uh, from, uh, the neighbors. I believe you have those.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
And I did not see any of the neighbors on the Zoom call that I could identify.
Okay.
All right, so is nobody else on the, on the Zoom to hear from?
Nobody, I don't.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions?
No.
Who's got it?
I believe I have it.
I see, Sean, there is a letter of pre-existing use in here from Mr. Podless?
You have to have that corrected, sir.
Is it because the information's incorrect?
Yes.
Specifically, what's incorrect?
So, the, the first thing that's incorrect is the one-story wood-framed, uh, single-family residence, it's really, I mean, it's a cape, so I would say it's either one and a half or a two-story wood-framed residence, and the storage shed, they're listing it as 10 by 12, and this shed was not 10 by 12 in 2010, and I think the evidence of that is in the pictures of the shed, just looking at the old clapboard siding on it. But, Mr. Hersfeld, well, we've had a conversation, and he's been in the family 35 years, for 35 years, that shed has been bigger than 10 by 12, so, I do have to go back and ask the building department to actually do an inspection based on the new survey. I don't believe a new survey was submitted when this was issued.
That's what I was gonna ask you, when this letter of pre-existing use was done in 2010, I would assume you observed the file and went through it, did you notice that if there was a survey in there at the time?
No, I think they used the 1974 survey.
Okay, all right. Now, I have no problem with it.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I moved at the appeal of Richard Hersfeld, 5 Bayside Avenue, South Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 93-1-14.1, which is located in the RB40 zoning. For variances and relief from chapter 301, 15A, 1A, where the accessory structure is in a front yard which is not permitted, and section 222E, where the proposed reconstruction increases the gross floor area of the accessory structure in front yard representing an increase in the degree of nonconformity of a pre-existing nonconforming accessory structure which is not permitted. Be approved in accordance with applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector. So moved.
Mr. Gazillo.
Wait, we need a second, we need a second. We need a second after so moved. Go ahead, second, or you speak. I moved it. Ralph, you have to say it.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So you know what to do for that?
Thank you very much.
Take care. Good luck, folks.
Good luck. Have a good winter down there.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We're gonna freeze you or not.
Gotta avoid that hurricane stuff.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
Next is appeal 2020-036, Susan Moore's, 22 Beach Road, Jamesport, tax map number 67160, RB40 zoning. For variances and a relief from chapter 301, section 17, where proposed side yard setback is five feet, minimum required is 20 feet, where proposed rear yard setback is five feet, minimum required is 20 feet, and where proposed impervious surface is 28.2% and maximum permitted is 15%.
Helen, you on?
Hello? Hello?
Yeah, who's this?
That's Jim.
Hello?
Jim DeLuca, hello, Jim.
Aye.
Aye, Mr. DeLuca, raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, help me God?
I, I do.
State your case.
Okay, basically, uh, this, um, uh, resident, uh, has an existing shed in the back, and it's about five feet off the line now, in one place, and it's 3.2 feet, uh, you know, on the side, and 5.8 in the back. He wants to knock that shed down and put up a, uh, a garage to keep his boat in, which is gonna be 21 by 18. He doesn't intend to put a asphalt driveway, and it's gonna remain grass, because it's just for the storage of his boat and, uh, and stuff, you know, like furniture and things of that nature. Uh, it's not common in that area, uh, it's not uncommon in that area that there is other garages, there's one next door, right to him, which is a two-car garage, to the south, that is about 3.5 feet off the line. Uh, it, uh, on the side yard, it's got a deeper rear yard, but for, um, purposes of maintaining a rear yard, you know, nice lawn, and the septic system that's there, we wanted to put it as close to the corner as possible, and, uh, basically, um, it's just for his storage, there'll be no, uh, only electric, there'll be no, uh, additional facilities in there, bathrooms, or water, or anything else, uh, it's just the boat's storage. And, um, those trees that are there, the two pine trees, their branches are gonna be trimmed, and those are gonna remain, and as I said before, there'll be no asphalt driveway, or stone driveway, or anything else put in there, and it'll be a one-story, uh, structure, with a single, uh, single overhead door and one, uh, swing door.
So no, no, no second floor then, right?
Pardon me?
No second floor?
No, 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 no.
Go ahead.
No.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Anyone else online?
Okay, you ready?
I guess, anybody have any questions?
I moved at the appeal of Susan Moore's, 22 Beach Road, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 67160, RB40 zoning, for variances and a relief from chapter 301, section 17, where proposed side yard setback is five feet and minimum required is 20 feet, where proposed rear yard setback is five feet and minimum required is 20 feet, and where proposed impervious surface is 28.2% and maximum permitted is 15%. Be granted, in accordance with the application and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector. Second.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the appeal has been granted. You know the process from the...
Thank you so much, and, uh, thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, have a good night, folks.
Bye.
Next is appeal 2020-037, Helen Kostira, 172 Washington Avenue, South Jamesport, tax map number 6915, RB40 zoning, for variances and a relief from chapter 301, section 15A, 1C, where side yard setback is 4.5 feet, minimum required is 20 feet.
Helen, you there?
Hello?
Helen? Unmute. Can you hear us, Helen?
Helen, are you there? But she's on the phone.
Is that her now? Helen?
Do you have a volume that you could turn up? Oh, boy.
Cell phone? Helen, you have a bad signal, we can't understand anything you're saying.
Hang up, recall.
Helen? Is that what she should do?
She should get out and come back.
Helen, Helen, get off.
Hang up.
Helen, hang up and call, call back. Helen, hang up, call back, you have a terrible connection right now. Okay. Okay, unmute, Helen. Hello?
So it'd be 773200, extension 214? She can get right with it? Do you wanna just tell her that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Here comes a phone now, no phone, just getting it, this is her. Hello, Helen?
Helen?
Hello?
Ah, there we go.
That's much better. All right.
All right, Helen, raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, help me God?
Aye, so if we're to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
You're a wonderful person.
That's wonderful.
State your name and your address.
My name is Helen Kostira, and I live at 45 Summerfield Lane, North Riverhead.
Okay.
All right.
What can we help you out with? What do you need?
Excuse me?
What's your problem?
Uh, I'm looking for a variance for a side yard setback on my garage.
Oh, that's funny. Not, not you, Helen, we're just, what we said.
Okay.
I, I read the file, Helen, and I, I fully understand what the problem is here. I don't see any problem with it, I can see the garage was built a long time ago, and it was...
1968.
Yes, and at that time, it was really sketchy, back in that time when CO should have been issued or not. Most people got building permits, but they never asked for the inspection, nor did they receive a CO.
Right, that's what it looks like happened, because I did, I did see that my mother asked for the permit.
So, so what you had to do is get a variance tonight for the 4.5 feet, which I don't believe anybody here has a problem with, so, um, you know, I'd be happy to grant it myself personally, and I think the other board members will too. So, uh, I'm, I'm ready to, uh, to vote on it, I don't see any problem with it. Is there anybody out there?
Anybody else that'd be heard?
Does anybody else wanna be heard?
I, I spoke with all my, I spoke with all my neighbors, and I did not get any objections.
I didn't think you would, because it's been there since 1968, so...
Right.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the resolution to approve it, and we're gonna move on, okay? Are you there?
Thank you very much.
Okay, you got it. I moved at the appeal of Helen Costra, is that how you say it?
Kostira.
Kostira, thank you. 172 Washington Avenue, South Jamesport, tax map number is 90-1-5, for variances and relief from chapter 301, section 15A, 1C, where the side yard setback is 4.5 instead of the minimum required of 20 feet. Be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector. So moved. Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin, he says aye.
Aye, aye, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, for your patience. Okay.
Last is appeal 2020-041, Mariano Castro, 50 Carey Court, Riverhead, tax map number 681117.6, APZ zoning, for variances and a relief from chapter 301, section 36C, where proposed habitable space in a detached structure deemed not to be a customarily accessory use to principal single-family use.
All right, there, sir, if you kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, help me God?
Yes, sir.
State your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Angel Aponte, A.P.O.N.T.E., I reside at 1330 Washington Avenue, Bay Shore, New York, 11706, and I'm the agent for Mr. Mariano Castro, the owner of 50 Carey Court, Riverhead.
Okay, state your case.
All right, so we are here proposing a cabana, uh, which, which is a pool house, uh, which is accessory to the existing pool. I believe that the way the, uh, the code is written, if this is against code, because it is a habitable structure. However, this structure is just one, uh, open floor plan, uh, the, there's a three-piece bathroom, and a bar sink, refrigerator, um, and other than that, it's, it's finished on the, it should be finished on the inside, it's proposed to be finished. And that's what we have, 30 by 38 is the size.
That's a big cabana.
Yes, sir.
What are we planning on doing in that cabana?
Uh, pool house things, so, my client, or the owner of this house, has a very large family. They have a barbecue that is existing right now, uh, to the, let's take a look at the survey here. It's to the north of the property, which is the back of, what they use as their backyard, the existing saltwater pool. And so, the cabana is, is really for the large family that he has, the family parties that they like to have here in the summer.
So, so you're proposing a bathroom now, none, none of that is there right now, correct?
Correct, it, this is all proposed.
We did go to the site, but it was heavily fenced, so, um, and we didn't wanna disturb anyone, so we passed by on the road.
Okay.
I see that you have, um, a septic system, a septic tank, um, are those in already, are they installed already?
No, no, it's proposed, yeah, so, the only thing...
So you're calling out an electric panel, you're gonna do septic tank, and you're gonna do leaching pool, correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and we have, we have a pending application with Suffolk County Health Department. It was, um, stopped because they actually, which I've never seen in the 15 years that I've been doing variances for other clients, the Suffolk, uh, Suffolk County Health Department actually went back and asked that I get approval for a finished detached structure from the municipality.
Okay, I got you, yes, and I'm familiar with that, so...
Yeah.
Okay, so, if I, do you have an elevation of the structure? Like, do you have a picture of it, the way it's gonna look?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Is that visible? Can you see that?
Okay, yes, I can, and that's facing the pool, I take it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I see the other side elevations and rear elevation, please? Yeah, you're getting it, I see it. Okay, windows, ooh, nice.
And then it's one big room.
They're not gonna be putting any, uh, like, in-laws back there or anything, right?
Any what? I'm sorry, repeat that?
Any in-laws, or kitchens, or anything like that?
No, no, no.
No, that wouldn't happen, right?
No kitchens, no kitchens, did you wanna see the other two sides?
Yes, please. So if I looked at the layout to construct it, thank you, um, is it a flat layout, or does it show partitions inside?
No partitions, the, uh, of course, the only...
Just the bathroom?
Is the bathroom that has the, uh, you know, it's enclosed, but other than that, it's all open.
Okay. And what kind of electrical power do you plan on supplying to it? If it's gonna be just a bathroom, I don't think you'd need much out there, right?
Yeah, so it's just enough for the lighting, um...
So it's just enough for the lighting, so are they gonna run a sub-panel from the house?
Yes, yes, and there's, there is a refrigerator for the drinks, but that's about it.
So they're gonna run a sub-panel from the house to the caban?
Yes, sir.
So they're not gonna apply for a separate meter or a separate ledger?
Absolutely not.
Okay, all right. So, myself personally, I think we should put some conditions on it, but I'm not exactly sure what they would be yet.
Okay.
So, I think we should discuss that with legal counsel.
Okay.
And then have a reading in two weeks.
Okay, sounds good to me. All right, so, Mr. Barnes has suggested we...
It, it's not gonna be anything, you know, we're just gonna make sure we say that it's not gonna be habitable living space, but usable space for the pool.
Right, right.
It's to be used as a cabana, not as an accessory structure for living quarters.
Correct.
There'll be no kitchens, you know, none of that stuff.
Right, and that, that's the part that I was, that I was explaining to, to the homeowner, is that if you read the code, what's actually written in the code, uh, talks about habitable, and, you know, according to the building code, the word habitable, yes, it's a kind of space that you can physically walk into, but it's not a living space where somebody's gonna be staying, whatever.
Correct.
For example, three, six, nine months out of the year, no, it's strictly for the use when the pool is open, people go in there, they have their parties, their barbecues, whatever the case is, the bathroom is used for washing, the salt, nothing more, nothing less.
So I think the board's certainly willing to approve it, uh, maybe, I don't know, I don't know what the others are feeling, but at least we're gonna develop some, some, uh, restrictions, or I should say, conditions with our legal counsel, and then we'll let you know in two weeks, how's that?
Okay, do we have to meet again like this in two weeks?
Uh, we can actually pass the resolution in two weeks, you don't have to be here, I mean, I would, I would dial in myself, just in case.
Okay.
Just so you can.
So it's October twenty-second.
October twenty-second, thank you, sir.
Okay, and we'll, we'll have you, you'll be up first or second, one or the other.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, who's got it?
So we're just gonna move this to October twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
I don't have it.
Chairman, I move, uh, oh, shit, I just put it away. Appeal, uh, twenty twenty forty minute. Chairman, I respectfully move appeal number twenty twenty dash zero forty-one, fifty Kerry Court, Riverhead, to October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty.
You can wait here a second.
I second.
Mr. Gazilla.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we'll speak to you on the twenty-second.
Great, thank you, gentlemen.
Good night. Stay safe.
Have a wonderful night, thank you.
Have a great night.
We're here in motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're here in motion to close the meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Good night.